We can proceed.
All right, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven forty-four P M. It's August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. This is the third Tuesday of August. Our Bridgeport Borough Council meeting officially called to order. Folks, we are starting a few minutes later past our seven thirty time. We had a couple Zoom issues to work through, but we are we are all loud and clear now. So everybody, if you could please join me in pledging the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
Liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please, Keith.
Certainly. Randy Bennett.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Schenk.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Corey Scott.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Thank you. All are present and accounted for. President Schenk.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. And for the public notice, the council was in executive session from seven P M. until about seven thirty-two. Mr. Truman, take it away. Oh, we were in executive session discussing some matters of real estate.
Very good. Thank you, President Schenk. First up, for council consideration, the adoption of council meeting minutes for the July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty meeting.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Heard a motion from Mr. Heil. I believe it was seconded by, was that Ms. Nolan?
Yep.
All right. Any additional questions or comments from council regarding the minutes from July twenty-first? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Next up for council consideration, a disabled space request. The address is four A Union Avenue. However, that is just for clarification, an apartment building that is owned by four ninety-four Ford Street, which is the the Elks Lodge. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a memorandum dated August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, where the Traffic and Parking Subcommittee is recommending approval of the disabled space application for for A Union Avenue. The Traffic and Parking Subcommittee recommends council approve this request. The applicant meets the criteria used to evaluate applications of this nature. Furthermore, Traffic Safety Officer Seber, as a matter of protocol, reviewed this application as well, and he additionally recommended approval of this space. I would only make the note that, and this is this is nothing new, this is a protocol for our evaluation and approval process, that this space only carries with the applicant. As this is a rental property, it is incumbent upon the landlord to notify the borough when and if the current tenant and applicant being awarded the space vacates the premises, whereupon it is up to the borough's discretion whether or not they choose to keep or eliminate the space. And generally speaking, we do eliminate the space.
My only question is, in the application, it's not exactly clear where the spot will be. It says near the telephone pole or three. I guess that'll just be evaluated by the police when putting the lines in.
No, this, the the evaluation in terms of placement of the space, Mr. Heil actually is done by Dave Lang, our Public Works foreman. This is going to be located on Union Avenue, basically directly across the street from the church parking lot.
Oh, yeah, I know that. It just says where on the curb isn't exactly clear yet because it looked like Dave would have to make sure what is right by safety protocols, right?
Yes, that's 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 a fair fair statement, yes.
Okay. Well, in that manner, I'll I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Scott. It sounded like to follow the recommendation of the Traffic and Parking Committee and approve this disabled parking spot. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next, for council consideration, authorization to pay bills and salaries for the month of August.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Heard a motion made by Ms. Nolan, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to authorize the payment of bills and salaries. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That's unanimous as well. Thank you.
Next up for council consideration, advertisement of ordinance two thousand and twenty-two, issuance of general obligation note in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Members of council, this general obligation note or loan, to put it more simply, would be for the purpose of purchasing purchasing a street sweeper for the borough. The purchase of a street sweeper was it was a budgeted capital expenditure in the approved two thousand and twenty budget. We we had held off from purchasing it earlier in the year simply because of the uncertainty revolving around the COVID nineteen-related shutdown of the economy. And now as we're we're starting to slowly crawl out of the uncertainty and wrap our heads around the the aftermath that's materializing, it makes sense to move forward with, rather than buying this outright and using capital fund money, which we certainly have in the reserves to buy outright, given the the interest loan, the the interest rates that are available for loans of this nature, the pro forma, which is the estimate provided to us by Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority, shows that we can obtain an interest rate well below one percent. Point eight four two percent is the estimate that we're being given. Now, we can't lock into that until we adopt the ordinance, but that is a ballpark. The debt service that we would have insofar as interest over the course of the life of this loan, which would be a ten-year loan, would be next to nothing, would be somewhere in the vicinity of twelve thousand dollars stretched over the course of ten years. So that being said, the first step in moving forward with the purchase of the street sweeper would be advertising this ordinance, which would authorize the incurrence of this general obligation debt.
Just for what it's worth, I thought I had just on the street sweeper itself, the storms we had a week and a half ago, I think, highlighted again the need for that to keep those storm drains clear of litter. And Keith, you can speak on it for a moment if you want, but purchasing a street sweeper like this would be significantly helpful.
That's correct, President Schenk. Historically, we have had a street sweeper. We last year, we had a nineteen ninety-six Ford sweeper. After twenty-two years of service, it finally just was breaking down too much, and it would actually cost us money and break a break a vacuum line every time we we turned it on. So we sent that to auction. It is an obligation of the borough through through the D E P that we actually must own and operate a street sweeper. So we need to we need to assume and and continue with that obligation, and this is the this is the first step in doing so.
And this is something that can help mitigate some of the stormwater flooding, especially in the lower the lower elevation parts of town when we get downpours like we had in the the storm two weeks ago. By keeping the storm sewers clear.
Yes, and it this this sweeper will also have a a jetter on it, which, you know, it doesn't it doesn't rise to the level of the the large industrial back trucks that you need to clog or unclog a major blockage, but can certainly take care of minor blockages and alleviate some of those problems. Yes, that's correct, President Schenk.
We had talked about this in finance over the last couple meetings, and with these interest rates, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve this.
I will second.
I heard a motion made by Mr. Scott, seconded by Ms. Nolan to advertise ordinance twenty twenty zero zero two to issue a general obligation note in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for a street sweeper. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Next, for council consideration, advertisement of ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, appointing Portnoy Associates as solicitor responsible for unpaid claims on delinquent accounts. Members of council, we for many years have had and a considerable problem insofar as delinquent accounts not paying the the sewer rental fees and trash fees. It has risen to a level where I believe that we all can agree it's not something that can be kept under kept under control by 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 in-house measures. And at this point, I think that it makes sense that we engage a law firm that specializes in delinquent collections of this nature, and that's exactly what Portnoy Associates does. They have over one hundred and fifty municipal clients throughout the state of Pennsylvania. Their closest office is in King of Prussia, actually right down on Horizon Horizon Boulevard in the Renaissance Industrial Park. And they specialize in and exclusively serve municipalities for debt collection of this nature. So in that regard, again, like the general obligation debt that we just voted on, the first step in appointing Portnoy Associates as a solicitor in charge of delinquent accounts would be to advertise this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to appoint them. We've discussed this many times and in finance, and it's the right move to do.
Mr. Heil, it would be a a motion to advertise the ordinance, not to appoint them just yet.
I'm sorry. I I make a motion to advertise.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Oh, we have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Scott to advertise ordinance twenty twenty zero zero three, appointing Portnoy Associates, solicitor responsible for unpaid claims on delinquent water and sewer accounts. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, members of council. Next up for council consideration, authorization to repay state pension aid overpayment. Members of council, we receive state aid to help to help contribute towards our our pension accounts on an annual basis. It is called Act two oh five money. In a recent year's Act two oh five distribution, we actually received too much money, more than more than we should have. The state overpaid the borough to the tune of ninety-three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Therefore, and this was discovered in a recent pension audit performed by the Auditor General's Office. Therefore, we need to now repay that state aid back to the state and additionally include interest on that amount. The interest totals, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. So to that end, I would recommend council that we authorize the repayment of this state aid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Bennett, seconded by Ms. Nolan to authorize the repayment to the state pension of the state pension aid monies in the amount that was just described by Mr. Truman. Do you have any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the manager solicitor engineers report portion of tonight's meeting. And with that, we can move forward to unfinished business. Are there any members of council with unfinished business that they would like to address at this time? All right, seeing none, we can move to committee reports. Are there any committee chairs that have reports to share this evening? Very good. With that, we can proceed to the mayor's report. Mayor Barbie, do you have anything for the for the meeting this evening, sir?
I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Barbie. Next up, we can move to the chief's report. Chief Beretta.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start off with thanking a couple groups that have been very helpful to to Bridgeport. Again, Mr. Mr. Neary from the Depot Street, supporting our different different programs. So we're doing creative kids for Bridgeport. We're having kind of like back-to-school or fun coloring book and packages for the kids. We did, we've been doing the meals, the different meal programs, both vegetables, fruits, pizzas and everything else. So I just want to thank Mr. Neary's track support of Bridgeport for the last five to six months. It's tremendous. Doubling down on that, we've been in contact with Mom's Meals, Ms. Cindy Selly, and they're now supporting, going to support ten ten Bridgeport families without me having to necessarily hand out the the meals. Wonderful things. So going into next month, we're going to have the Fight Against Hunger Month is September, and I'm working it out with Mom's Meals, but we'll try to do something that's that's responsible not to cause gatherings, but besides the direct shipment of meals to families of Bridgeport, are probably going to have a truck with cat weeks' worth of meals and packs of meals for those people, and we'll work out some sort of schedule to get those to the people that need it. So once again, thank you for these supporters. You will have seen, on another side note, some of our signs are different signs in the different roadways. You'll see one another sign that's from the the Cal Street Project that's out there. That's a speed sign. So please be wary. It's gonna it's gonna identify your speed. We've got a speed sign at the top of the Cal Street coming into Bridgeport. There is a speed sign. It was on Prospect Avenue, and we did a traffic survey because people were concerned. They're concerned about the speeding vehicles on Prospect. So we conducted a survey there and some enforcement. And that same sign has been moved to Ford Street, and we're going to conduct a traffic survey there. So if you see the signs, slow down, please. Want to thank Bocchi Funeral Home and Lunch on Us for for dropping off food to borough employees over the last couple weeks. Again, thank you. Thank you for the forward thinking and progressive thinking of Bridgeport Borough's elected and appointed officials and supporting the policy and procedure rewrite that was in the capital budget. And that's been signed. Our contract's been signed, and I look forward to a lot of good things and some longer days to to bring into reality a strong policy and procedure manual that will help the borough of Bridgeport for many, many more years to come. Like to thank Alex Mann and Eric Evans. Eric is from Bridgeport for putting on autism and first responder training for our police officers at roll call about three and a half weeks ago. So thank you. Bridgeport Police attended and assisted with the Race for Peace event and Upper Marion Township at the mall last late last month. It was a success. So you're seeing law enforcement work together with community organizers and leaders to all get us to where we need to be, and that's to take care of each other. So that was a great event. I want to give you a little brief update on the COVID. As of right now, Pennsylvania, there was one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine as of yesterday positive cases of COVID with seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine deaths. Of those percentages, the twenty-five to forty-six group is the highest percentage group at thirty-eight percent, followed by the group right after forty-six, into the fifties, at twenty-four percent. So groups in the twenties through the forties that gather, obviously, that's that that information spells for speaks for itself. So Pennsylvania is doing well, though, and so is Montgomery County. Keep masking. It's the little things. Keep cleaning, cleaning your hands, especially when you're around other people. Please continue to do that. And and again, of that, in Montgomery County, we suffered seven hundred and ninety-two deaths in just in the ninety-six nursing home facilities. Of those, we had about three thousand cases of COVID were in those ninety-six facilities in Montgomery County. So a great portion of our fatalities came from there. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Montgomery County Emergency Management Personnel for a lesson learned over the COVID crisis. I'm curious to see what everyone has to say about that. I'm sure I know I have a lot more to learn about what's been going on and what's going on, but we ask businesses and people to continue to, if you don't do it for yourself, whether it's masking or cleanliness, hand cleaning, distancing, just do it for somebody else because it may impact that other person or that third party. And lastly, congratulations to Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, Dr. Al Condello. He just got hired by the by the United States Army, and he'll be working, helping to decon different facilities in the Eastern Seaboard, using his vast amount of knowledge to help to help for national national measures. So thank you and Al Condello for all that you've done for Bridgeport. Anything, the last thing I would say is that if anyone has questions or concerns about speed, speeding, traffic flow in your neighborhood, just give me a call, send me an email at chief@bridgeportpd.com, and I'm having directed patrols and surveys, and I'll put them on lists, on a weekly list. So, you know, we might think that there's a large problem in one place or another, but we have ways now of being of the divine, to what extent an issue will be. That's what I have for you this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Keith, I know that the community cupboard in Upper Marion is also helping people in Bridgeport with meals. So I don't know if there's any coordination that is helpful for you, but it is, like you said, just really remarkable how many businesses and people in town are stepping up, and because so many people are separated, you can't even see it happening. But I'm grateful to your department for what they're doing and helping.
Everyone's pitching in, and I know that I spoke with the Bridgeport Elementary's principal about, you know, the school district and the school moving into the the first Skyber School through January fourth. So, you know, they're going to continue, and they believe that Bridgeport Elementary School will once again become a drop-off point for meals so that our Bridgeport residents won't have to necessarily go to the Upper Marion Middle School. So I'm I'm hopeful that that will happen in a very near future.
If there's anything we need to do or can do to help with logistics, please let us know, because I'm sure that even if there's not something we do ordinance-wise or as a group, we'll all be happy to help.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Moving forward to new business. Are there any members of council with new business to address this evening?
Mr. Truman, it's not necessarily new business, but it did just occur to me. Chief, you kind of blew through the your report there. You had a lot to report, but that one item, the young man that came and did a training for first responders and residents with autism. And I don't want to take too much of our time on it, but I I watched a bit of what you guys did there, and that was that was a really cool program. So I just want to make sure we really did highlight on this recording so residents watching know that we had a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a resident of Bridgeport, a young man, came in and provided training to our first responders on how to, you know, more sensitively and more effectively communicate with residents that have autism as they go about their duties. And that's fantastic. But I I don't know that anybody else necessarily in the area is doing that. So thanks for taking the lead on that. And what was that young man's name, Chief?
It's Eric Evans from Prospect.
So, Mr. Evans, if you're watching this recording, thank you so much for coming to do that. That's that's really valuable to our folks. Much appreciated by council.
Thank you.
All right, seeing provided no other members of council have any other items of new business, we do have one that that came through my my office. Members of council, earlier today, I received a letter from Al DiGennaro, who is Deputy General Counsel for J. P. Mascaro and Sons, asking council to consider writing a letter of support on their behalf. Excuse me, pardon me, to the D E P to give them a temporary and by or interim, and interim in this case would be sixty days insofar as the request from Mr. DiGennaro states. A sixty-day interim window where Bridgeport would be complicit in allowing drivers, trash truck haulers, to drop their loads at the Great Valley Recycling Center, the the transfer station here in Bridgeport off of Marion Street. Right now, the D E P stipulates and regulates Mascaro's permit and states that they cannot drop any later than six o'clock P M. Mr. Math, or Mr. DiGennaro was stating that due to due to COVID and a handful of other exigent circumstances, which is taxing on their workforce, they are experiencing a lot of drivers that are unable to get there by six P M. So they're asking, again, to circle back to the beginning of my my comment, and asking council to write a letter of support on behalf of Mascaro to D E P, asking for a interim sixty-day timeframe where they could extend that deadline of six P M. to eleven o'clock P M. And Mr. DiGennaro stated he doesn't believe that they would need to have trucks typically coming in until eleven P M. However, that would just be the 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 very, the the far end of when trucks would come in. He perceives them coming in eight, nine, ten o'clock at latest, but but is asking for an eleven o'clock P M. extension just to be safe. Now, you know, I I'll say that I know council historically doesn't like voting on items of new business at the same meeting during which they're presented, so I'll certainly leave it up to council to to render an opinion here.
Yeah, Mr. Truman, I I saw the the letter you did forward to us earlier today. I don't necessarily have an issue with it, but I would like that to be something we put on the agenda so that the public could have some input before we vote on that matter. And I know that means Mascaro may have to wait until our next meeting for that answer, and I hope that's not too much of a burden on them, but I would just ask council that we we table that, and if Mascaro would like us to bring it up at our next council meeting, we can put it on the agenda so we can take a comment for it.
So is that a you're requesting a motion to table from from council president?
I don't know that we need a motion to table unless somebody wants to make a motion to.
Necessarily. We could we could just, if you're directing me to put it on next meeting, September eighth's agenda, I will do so.
Mr. Truman, yes, sir.
You got it.
Thanks.
Any other items of new business before we move forward? All right, seeing none. Open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements from from anybody at tonight's meeting that they'd like to share? All right, seeing none, we can move to the public comment portion of the meeting. And as as we all know, public comment are is being held or handled right now by submission to our info@bridgeportborough.org email account. If a resident wishes to submit a public comment during these current remote Zoom meetings, submit your question or excuse me, submit your comment rather to info@bridgeportborough.org by two o'clock PM, the day of the meeting, and we will read it into the record. We have one such email comment. And it goes as follows. It's from Ms. Kate Quaidar of twenty seven Seventh Street. And she states, hello, I would like to ask council to consider sending a letter to the Board of Elections requesting that a drop box be located in the borough. We have a large number of seniors and essential workers who live in the borough and it is important to give them an easy accessible way to vote. So I presume that Ms. Quaidar means a, a drop box for mail in, mail in ballots should should we go that, that direction? Mr. Schenken, I don't know if you've had a, an additional conversation with this resident?
I, I, I did, I did briefly. I don't think the county has necessarily made a final decision on how they'll be handling the mail in ballots or the drop boxes. I think the drop boxes specifically is still under discussion, but I, I would certainly I, I think it's a great suggestion and Bridgeport, due to the, the dense nature of our development, it is walkable. So people could get there relatively easy without having to drive over to Norristown or drive to any other drop boxes. And we do have a lot of a lot of older folks, people that may be, that may be more nervous about going to vote in person. So I would, I think that's great. I don't know if we necessarily need a vote to ask you to send that letter. Maybe.
I'll make a motion to send a letter to the county requesting a ballot drop box in Bridgeport.
And, and, oh, please go ahead. I, I did have a question, but go ahead, Mr. Scott.
I would, I would certainly second that. I'm, I'm all for that. I think really every municipality should have its own drop box. People aren't having to drive to Norristown. I know it's not a far drive for us. But, you know, a lot of other places it is. You know, there is some suits going on right now about, there's some challenges in the courts about the drop boxes. But should they get resolved in, in the favor of allowing them? I would, I certainly think we should have one in our borough and and all the other boroughs and townships in Montgomery County. I would also just like to remind anyone listening, if you're planning on requesting a mail in ballot, better to do it earlier. Do it now. As soon as you're done listening to our meeting here, votespa.com, request your mail in ballot. You'll get it sooner, as soon as you get it. Fill it out, turn it around, send it back. Postage is already paid for.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And before we move on that motion, Keith, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm just trying to, and pardon my, pardon my ignorance, you know, I've, I've always, I've always shown up in person to vote. I albeit I understand under these circumstances why there might be a desire for the mail in ballots by all means, but I presume that Ms. Quaidar is referring to mail in ballots for the presidential election?
For the, yeah, the general in November, the general election.
Okay. Which would still which would still necessitate. So if, if this drop box were to be in the borough, then a postal worker would then need to have direct access to the drop box in order to collect the mail in ballots?
I, I think however, however, the county directs that they do it.
So this, this is contingent upon if the county has a has, has an official policy in direct.
Yeah, the county will develop a program and if they do develop a program for drop boxes for mail in ballots, we're, we're sending a letter to request that they have one of those in the borough.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just to add on to that, for the primary in, when was it this year? May or June? What, June was it when it was pushed back? I, I worked for a campaign for the primary and a lot of people requested their ballots late. They would get them very late and they didn't have time to turn around and put them in the mail, you know, the Saturday before you get it, it's not going to get there in time. The county put, I think, five or six of these drop boxes throughout the county, one at the Board of Elections and then throughout other places. And it's a way, so you don't have to mail it, you put it in the drop box, it's a secure location, and then it's the election person comes and gets it. So that's, it just basically bypassing the postal service with, you know, a lot been going on in the news about that. So.
Understood. I, I, yes, and I recall how they handled the, the, the June set. There was a drop box over by by one Montgomery Plaza for the June second. Very good. Thank you for the clarification.
Really? So the, the motion on the floor was from Mr. Heil, it was seconded by Mr. Scott. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Then that passes you unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
And as already stated, that was the only public comment for this evening. So if there is nothing further.
And thank you, Ms. Quaidar, for the suggestion.
Yes.
I heard a motion to adjourn, folks. It's eight twenty, everybody out there in Bridgeport land. We hope to see you soon at Borough Hall. Obviously, this whole thing started back in March. I don't think anyone has expected this to extend the whole way through the summer and into the fall. But we will be back at Borough Hall as soon as it is safe for us to do so. And in the meantime, everybody, please stay safe. As the chief said, please follow the directions of the various health departments. Take care of yourself, take care of your friends and your neighbors and your family. And we will see you as soon as we are able to. With that said, meeting is adjourned. Thanks.
Take care, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.